Talk to Bill about what those rules were.
Oh, no, that would be rules.
Oh.
That would be good. That would be good.
Hello.
Chief, there's a spot for you if you want to.
Yeah, you can come up if you want.
I'm only on the side of nice.
Watch out. Watch out.
One minute.
One minute.
One minute.
Doing a countdown.
I'm doing a countdown.
Are you going?
It's gonna be a little bit longer than a. Okay, do we have anybody coming in on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right, well. We're gonna go ahead and get started with the pledge allegiance. So if everyone please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if everyone would stay standing for just a moment, we're gonna take this moment of silence for children. There were 14 second, third, and fourth graders gone down today in Texas, and our hearts bleed for them, as well as our Wego family, the Ditas family specifically, on the passing of their son Noah. Thank you very much. Okay. Good evening, and welcome to our meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, May the 24th. Are there any Zoom participants at this time?
None at this time.
Okay, and so we are being recorded via Zoom. The recording will be uploaded later to the Township's YouTube channel. Under the chairman's report, the board met an executive session for tonight's meeting to discuss personnel matters. Township offices will be closed Monday, May 30th in recognition of Memorial Day. There is no yard-based pickup on Wednesday, June 1st. The township will also be holding their next East Recycle event in the park on Saturday, June 4th from 9:00 to 12:00. Please register at the website. So that you can. Recycle your electronics. There are no public hearings, and under the emergency services reports, we do have Dr. Brenda Brannan.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start by thanking the East Goshen Board for the support that they gave to us during the last week. One of our officers' children died very suddenly and unexpectedly, and the board has given us an enormous amount of support. I would very much appreciate it. I'd like to thank you, Jim Nelson.
Tough time, so we're with the officers and particularly the Ditas family. Very tragic, and we hope. Healing in time, and I know you'll be there to support them, as some of the officers I saw yesterday said, you know, we got his back. We'll be caring for him. So that's a great thing. It's great to have that community.
I'd like to start by highlighting tonight some of the police activities that we've been engaging in to build community relationships. Every year, the Police Unity Tour travels across the United States. To raise public awareness for law enforcement officers who have died in the line of duty. It's a four-day bike tour that goes from New Jersey to Washington, DC. And this May, on May 9th, the tour passed through West Town and East Goshen Townships, with a quick stop for lunch at the Goshen Fire Company. And this year, as he has done for the past 11 years, our officer Ted Cam proudly represented our department in the tour. We're very proud of that. Some of the other community events, and I'm just gonna read through these really quickly because there's a lot of them. We participated in the Healthy Kids Day at the Westchester area of YMCA. Gave a presentation to the Daisy Troop, 594 at Penwood Elementary School. For National Nurses Day, we donated donuts to the Chester County Hospital. We participated in a driver training program designed to educate teens about the dangers of reckless and distracted driving at Ruston High School. Participation in both the junior and senior prom at Ruston High School to make sure it was a memorable but safe event. We participated in the Conversations Event at Ruston High School. We had life skill graduation ceremonies at both St. Pierre Paul and St. Simon and Jude, complete with ice cream. We did a valley, a visit to the Valley Youth House to deliver cookies and gift cards. And we participated in a presentation on preventing frauds and scams to the YMCA senior social club. So a lot of activity. With regard to statistics. I'm not gonna bore people with numbers, but I'm just gonna say that. The calls for service are up over the pandemic, and they're roughly equal to what they were pre-pandemic. I invite everybody to go to our crime watch and read our police blotter. We put a lot of information out for people so that you can be aware of what's happening in your communities. And I'm just gonna highlight some of the things that happened in the last six weeks in East Goshen. We investigated one attempted homicide. Obviously, there was an arrest made. There were 30 fraud investigations, 23 disturbance or dispute investigations, seven vandalism investigations. But unlike last month, they were scattered, and they were different types. We had two threat investigations with one adult being charged and another referred to another police department. Three drug investigations with one arrest, a weapons investigation with an arrest, two child abuse investigations, two missing adult, and three missing juvenile investigations, all people located. One sexual assault investigation and one simple assault investigation with an arrest. The numbers may sound a little high, but they're six weeks of data as opposed to more, which are normally the.
I'm just curious, Chief, has there been anything that you've seen as? Do you see anything that's recurring, like with our missing people? We've had a number of missing persons over the past number of months. Are any of them repeat offenders?
No, generally, our missing juveniles come from a facility, but even this month, not from there.
Okay.
So.
And you're not seeing any particular location for the vandalism? It's scattered throughout?
Yes, it was vandalism varying from, there were some keys, you know, and cars that were keyed, but there was also mailboxes and all the general things that we normally say.
Okay.
Chief, when you look at the statistics, do you break them down from type one, type two, and type three, so that you can, like?
Part one, part two.
Part one, and you know, the.
The 10, 10 serious crimes are part one.
It sounds like, you know, it'd be interesting to know, is there an increase in the more serious offenses over previous years? That would, as a citizen, I'm kind of interested in that.
Yeah, David, I was gonna ask that question too, Chief. I know we've been talking about trying to get reporting and information. I think. A comparative with that, I know you have to submit that to, I guess, to the FBI every month, part one crime activity. But I'd be curious to know what those are, month to month, is part one crimes come into that category or in that category that we have, and we start to get a feel for. The, you know, the really, really bad stuff that officers are not only have to follow through with, but are at risk. With, so that kind of got my attention is being interested in part one versus part two and how that plays out into our monthly statistics.
Couple months ago, I did break it down by part one.
Oh, did he? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
Said you could see the bigger picture.
Okay.
I ran from roughly 2018.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not see that. I'll have to go look.
That was in the emails.
And I must have just not opened up the reporting.
I hesitate to talk about trends like that from month to month, because you find that you're all over the place. I find that doing a window comparison is more inflammatory for the boards.
And I can appreciate the part, the part one crimes, we have them here. But one or two in the course of a month can really statistically skew things because they're infrequent. Serious as they are, they're infrequent, so just a couple of incidents or cases can throw that number off, and you go, there was a 50% increase. Well, it was just one additional get.
And that's why I'm hesitant to.
Yeah.
But you are correct. The vast majority of crimes that we investigate are part two crimes.
Yeah.
Chief, there's been a lot published lately about the issues at the 911 call center. The director's departure and staff reductions and poor morale. How's that impacting Wego, and is there anything we can do about it?
Well, the 911 center has always been very open to receiving feedback. And because there were some problems, the Chester County Chiefs of Police Association formed a group to examine it and to bring it to their attention so that it can be resolved. But the center has always been receptive to feedback, and if we have issues, whether we want to give positive or negative feedback, they've always been receptive to meeting with us and trying to resolve them. But again, the same thing that we're seeing with police officers, a lot of people are leaving that field.
Yeah.
I don't think people understand just how stressful doing the dispatcher is.
Yeah, David was saying to me just a few moments ago before the meeting that the shifts at 911 or 12-hour, 12-hour shifts. And. To be in that 911. Center on call for 12 hours seems to me to be. That's tough, especially if it, the 11th and a half hour, you get a serious one coming in, and you've got to be sharp, and you've got to be all the other qualities that you need for a dispatcher. That kind, so just the 12-hour shift in that environment is a tough one. So it's just, it's just an observation that as David had shared, and I thought, ooh.
And the one thing I can tell you is, when I work for the state police, when there were dispatchers that weren't available, either on dispatching. I have a very healthy appreciation for the stress of dispatchers. There's nothing worse than silence.
Yeah.
And waiting for somebody to get back here. It is a very stressful job, but they are our. Basically, our tether.
Yeah.
Without them, we can't do our job.
Yeah.
I believe that the county is addressing it.
Yeah.
And trying to get more people in.
I mean, to have a long-term tenure in that kind of position, I'd be, I would think the turnover has got to be. You know, three years, people have had enough of it because of the environment. I don't know what it's like, but that kind of, you know, I'm starting to think about just what it's like to be in that. And I've been to the center, so I, you know, I've seen them in operation, and it's. Cloistered, it's. You know, it's lit, but it's, you know, it's.
It's tough. Well, I was just.
Yeah.
So again, if anybody out there is interested in helping your community.
After all, is this? Sign up.
There's a lot of jobs that are stressful.
Yeah.
They're also very satisfying.
Yes.
So please, please apply. We need you desperately.
And that said, I believe, Mike, that the email that the chief sent out was in February.
Okay.
And I think that maybe the next opportunity will be next year to see how things compare, so.
But I appreciate your perspective on that and sharing it, because that was in the back of my mind, too, statistics. Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Are there any questions from anybody here in the room? From the chief?
Chief, thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you again for your support.
Our best to all the officers.
Least we could do. I'm going to see, can we have Grant come on up and give us the rundown? Welcome. How are you?
I'm good.
Good to see.
So from the April report. Our responses were down a little bit, 34 calls for the month. It's a little bit light for us, but we'll get an occasional one. It's, you know, looks low. Also, 34 of those 17 were automatic alarms, so we continue at a fairly high rate. Actually, I just looked at the main numbers today, and the main actually, it's 65% for calls. And I don't think we've ever had that.
But that's a good thing.
Well, it's not a good thing, because we're sending the equipment out every time that happens, and every time you send the equipment out, it's a risk.
Oh, 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 yeah, I missed, I misheard. That's okay, gotcha.
So there's still, is there any way that there can be any way to perhaps cut down on the, I guess you really can't, if it's, if it's for real, you need to have your truck there.
Yeah, it's a risk management decision. Now, we reduced it to one engine or two engines, none of them type today, because, again, I believe some of them end up being false. But, you know, we have one last month, we went with an automatic alarm, that's an active fire. It was serious. It's hot and dry. Yeah, you know, there was a. I think we've managed it to the level that we can and still, you know, provide protection.
Okay.
EMS responses continue fairly strong. We have noticed an uptick in motorcycle accidents as the weather changes, obviously. It's an unfortunate consequence.
Yeah.
Are those people wearing rain buckets or not?
Great question. I think one was very well addressed. So calls continue to be up 11% for firing, and that's some fire police calls pretty year. And. And we're seeing that the maze up a little bit, so. For fire, a little bit of that. As I probably said, pre-COVID, post-COVID, things are kind of. We had a successful flower sale.
Okay.
On May 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th, 10th, again, we'll sell out.
That's, oh, good.
Perfect.
Take a little bit of a breather from fun raising.
Yeah, 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 I know, that's not their favorite.
Can you tell us what the dates are for the fair? Do you happen to know?
Always happens on Thursday, August.
Second to the eighth, second through eighth.
We have another one that we have back here.
So when is it, Graham?
Basically, the first.
So would it be August 1st through the 6th? Okay. Instead of.
Since we have the one flyer under which Chester, everyone. So the township.
Oh, good, good.
And then for training perspective, we continue our bread and butter stuff, you know. Ladders, hoses, all that kind of stuff. We've also done some technical training. We had a pump operation last week. Firefighters were a driver, that's something. And last night, we hosted a Tesla train.
Oh.
Tesla's opening up next this, same time of year, too. We have contacted them, and you see in the news, there's a lot of controversy about looking at batteries and things like that.
Yeah.
And they took us through every single model and showed us whether it's an extrication from an accident or a fire situation they went through in depth.
That's good. That's proactive. I think that's great.
Any questions for Grant?
This is a bigger picture, but it kind of. Cued me. With the motorcycle activity, I don't know how many states in the, in the, in our country that. Don't have helmet requirements. Is Pennsylvania one of the few that is, has a, you know, a no helmet requirement, Graham? Yeah, I just was curious. What do you know?
I have a rider, I. It's interesting, New Jersey has a helmet law, Maryland has a helmet law, most of the contiguous states around it don't, but Pennsylvania does not. I ride a bicycle with a helmet. I ski with a helmet. I whitewater raft with a helmet. I ride my motorcycle without a helmet.
Interesting.
And it's. I won't bore everybody with why, but there are reasons.
Okay.
Not to do it, so.
Okay, all right, well, that's a little perspective as a non, non.
Talk to me after the meeting.
Wow, okay, that's an interesting twist. I'm gonna say, please wear your helmets if you're riding a bike or a motorcycle, please, as a healthcare professional. I really prefer not to see that.
Thanks, Grant.
Thanks so much, Grant.
Thanks, Grant.
As for the other. Reports.
I can read those, Madam Chair, and Carmen, that since.
Perfect.
Do we, do we need to? I mean, it'll be really quick.
Perfect.
So Malvern Fire Company for the month of April responded to 23 calls in East Goshen. Three were basic life service. Two transports, basic life supports, whatever that is. 20 was advanced life support, and then there was six transports with the advanced life support. There was also one auto accident and 22 medical calls. For Good Fellowship, East Goshen had 50 calls for the month of April that made up 9% of Good Fellowship's calls, and we have 221 calls to date through Good Fellowship.
I'm just gonna make this comment one more time. Goshen Fire Company responded very effectively to give us a little perspective when we do year-over-year comparisons in the prior year.
Yes.
I still don't see it from Malvern Fire Company. I, and with Good Fellowship, with Kim and Chaz there that do these reports, why they can't give us a year-over-year comparison? I don't know, but we need to have some perspective. These numbers just sit out there for the month, and we don't, we can't, we can't make any observation from the prior year. Oh, there were less, there were more. Can you give us an explanation if it's warranted? It's just, I just think it makes sense to have some comparative value. I've asked this numerous times. I can call Ken directly.
Unfortunately, we don't have Grant here anymore. How do we?
Well, Grant, Grant is, that's, this is a different outfit from them, but, you know, we could, we could call. I mean, I'll call Kim or Chaz.
I can, I can call Kim and Chaz.
Yeah.
We can reach out. We just wrote down donation.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Malvern, yeah, that's right, and Malvern, I don't know why they can't give us a comparative like that for the year. All right, I.
So much, just so I understand, because they do give us year-end in January from the previous year, so you're looking for.
I'm looking at the month, each month as we proceed through it.
Just give us a column.
April 2022 to April 2021. Yeah, give us a, give us a column, so we can see what happened last year, and it gives us a little sense of maybe, nothing changed, maybe it's, maybe it's. These things can be so random that it's not as relevant, but it just helps me ground myself a little bit, and.
I agree.
All right.
All right, moving along then for the financial report date, you wanna go ahead and give us some rundown?
Certainly. As of April 30th, now passed through, the general fund had year-to-date revenues of $4,561,793, and expenses of $3,235,321 for a surplus of $1,264,72. As of April 30th, the general fund balance was $7,099,431. Our actual year-to-date revenue finished 1% higher than budget, 5% higher than prior year. Higher building permit revenue is offsetting the monthly delay in the property tax receipts from the county. Our total year-to-date expenses are flat with budget, 3% lower than prior year-to-date. So the outlook and conclusion through four months of 2022, East Goshen Township is managing expenses in an inflationary environment. For the 12-month trailing April 2022, CCBIU was 8.4%. Assuming the township experiences no large unanticipated expenses, it is still my opinion that we are currently attracting our 2022 budget expectations.
Could I ask a question about that?
Yes.
We have a. A surplus, which is. Revenues less expenses of 1.3 million and change.
Year-to-date.
Is that a timing issue, or are we that far ahead?
It's a timing issue, depending on how the pensions get paid out, depending on when we've got contributions for the fire for Wego, capital expenditures like that. And then at the end of the year, we have some outlays to the capital funds that we contribute to.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
So since we're cash basis, it's a, it's a raw number, it's a straightforward number, it doesn't reflect those anticipated or the lag, so that, you know, it looks great, but year-to-date. Is, is good, but there's a lot of, but there's a lot in there that will be balanced out.
It will, and then some, that's kind of what I'm looking forward to as far as the June, 2nd, June meeting, the long-range plan. Getting a good level-set projection. Not being overly conservative, but making sure that we look in line by department and then drilling into the line item details to see. Where we may be at risk, where we shouldn't be at risk, how we're doing for salaries. And contributions, and really with maintenance, fuel charges, some of these things that we know are gonna continue to cost a lot more. We make sure that we don't get overly aggressive and hope that we're better off than we are. It's nice to see a prior year number where we're actually lowering expenses. Kind of trying to maintain that, so really just keeping a weekly look at everything and wrapping it up with these monthly forecast looks.
Dave, I do want to ask you to address. The relative to revenue, the higher bill for, offsetting the monthly delay in property tax receipts, that current variance is $152,000, as I see it. What's happening with the county and where do we stand? Unless you just tell me, we're in good shape, Mike, I have confidence, I'll get it squared away, but this, the delay. I hadn't experienced that with the county in the years that I was involved, and I just, it bothers me that we're 152. Out of, out of sync with where we should be.
We will get caught up. It's, they sent out the bills late this year. We didn't order to stop in time.
I remember you saying.
We only get it, we only get it once a month, whereas when we look at prior year, we were collecting day one of January, anything that was coming in. So really, we missed February collections that we would have done internally.
You know, I mean, I've had a lot of confidence in the treasurer's office for handling this for municipalities, but, and as long as you say to me, we're all right.
I read a report today that's letting me know we're.
We're closing, we're closing. Okay, all right, I'll leave it at that.
As for the minutes, we are going to postpone, going over the minutes as a note to the public, there was, some of the board members, perhaps, there were a few missing pages. We got pages one, three, and five, there was just a technical snafu with uploading those to the internet, so we're gonna move right along to the treasurer's report, and then we'll. Be with our guest in a moment. So the treasurer's report, Dave, well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The treasurer's report is for the weeks, April 13th, 2022 through May 17th, 2022, almost a month period. The general fund revenue over this period was driven by tax receipts, quarterly Comcast franchise fee, building and parts and recreation fees. And our expenses were, including general capital contributions to Wego, regular insurance payments, contributions to Malvern Library, Good Fellowship, and Malvern Fire Company. Contributions, audit fees, free removal, and routine operating expenses. Our capital reserve fund incurred roughly $141,000 in expenses, and $99,000 of that was for total site development, construction work on Hershey's Mill Dam, which was approved in the May 30th. And then we had an additional $39,000, which is a 40% deposit needed for the helical screws that are gonna be used in the portal block.
Yeah.
That's one of the final phases. We're getting close, and it should be wrapped up pretty shortly. $4,000 was for the second half, the replacement cost of the LED signs, which are displaying at East Goshen Township Park in the corner of Boot Road and Pale and Pike, so those are finished paying off. The bond fund incurred $21,000 in expenses for engineering services regarding Milltown Dam project, $1,000 for Hershey's Dam, Hershey's Mill Dam project engineering, and then $580 for legal expenses related to the Pale and Pike trail. Sewer cap reserve incurred about $8,000 in expenses for teledyne systems to replace the refrigerated sandblow system at the Reilly Creek Sanitary Treatment Plant. Have you done, answer any questions?
I got one. What, Dave, what's your perspective or thought on, when it comes to, I'll say, soft costs, and I'm gonna refer specifically to legal expenses. Instead of charging those costs to the capital reserve fund or the bond fund. Why not just include them in our legal, general operating budget or expenses for the, for the year as opposed to. Hitting those kind of soft costs within the capital reserve fund? hitting those kind of soft costs within the capital reserve fund or the bond fund? I, I'm, I, it's just a, it's an accounting, i- it could be, you, it just may be the way you feel comfortable handling it that way, or we haven't thought about it particularly, but when I see those soft costs and then they're related to the capital reserve fund that uh, that, it, it's, it's a little too squishy for me as opposed to the hard stuff that we're supposed to be funding out of those, those funds.
So the capital reserve fund are primarily will do only construction costs, um, or capital replacement costs. So total sites construction and the boardwalk and the LED signs came out of cap.
Yeah.
But then for the bond fund is where we're doing a lot of the soft costs, because they were basically budgeted.
Okay.
To take, take care of that. And then we were assuming we're either gonna use grant money to pay back the capital funds or if we had to go in capital funds for the construction, that's what we.
So that would make it moot anyway in that report. Okay. All right. I just thought I'd ask. It, it popped up as I was looking at it. Thank you.
Dave, you seen any uh, tracking the Comcast franchise fee, any trends of attacking what we anticipated or?
It's, it's going as anticipated so far. I haven't seen any major swings. Um, I, I am hopeful that we'll get an increase more than I was suspecting when we finished, we did pay um, one, one of the installments. Um, Derek's been in touch with him more than I have, but um, be interested in going through some of the language and talking to him about some of the improvements he had mentioned in his presentation, but um, to make sure we can realize some of those uh, fees.
Thanks.
I don't think it's gonna be less than what we anticipated. I, I would assume it'd be a small percentage more, at least.
Okay, thanks. I just have one more, Michelle, if I might.
Sure.
Um, it kinda goes, well, at least my reference point goes back to the, the financial report, but it's a, it's a straightforward one. The refuse fund, um, do you see any sense, of course, we have new uh, new rates for this year for refuse and recycling for customer charges? Um, do you see any uh, trend uh, on the upside for the refuse fund? It, it, to me, my sense is, I haven't looked at the different months, uh, but it seems like it's kinda edging up a little bit as far as the refuse fund go to, or, or is it, or my, you know, is there no real trend yet?
I haven't found something um, on a monthly basis that I can say is a trend yet.
Okay.
Um, but I am watching.
Okay, all right, good. Yeah.
And I, and I think it's leaning also towards we would have an existing balance when we do our budget for next year that we can plan to do the recycling program.
Okay. Okay.
With the existing balance, and I think, I think my plan is that we're not gonna need to raise those rates, and if we needed to change them and lower them, we'd do that.
Okay. All right. Well, that, that's, I was kind of looking at that a little bit and thinking. Oh, well, I, it'd be a nice to have that washer, you know, have that kind of perfectly, uh, yeah. Thank you.
Um, Chair, I'd like to move that we graciously accept receipts and approve the expenditures as presented in the expenditure register and as summarized in the treasurer's report.
No, second, I'll second that.
Thanks, Mike. Okay. Does anybody have any other questions regarding any of the other expenses here in the register? Um, I'm just gonna point out that we paid sixteen thousand dollars to Mally for the um, report for the audit, and that was the, how much was the municipal authority?
Thirty-two fifty.
Thirty-two, yeah. And um, those reports are down.
That was, I was gonna say, that might have been just one, thirty-two. Okay. I watched it. Yeah, I, I didn't think it was, cause I went, now, East Bradford was about that.
The, uh, the audits, the audited reports, auditors' reports are available online for anybody who's interested in taking a look at those.
And the audit reports are uh, very, very good. There are no, no serious findings. Uh, so that's, if you read that, uh, you'll see that the, the director of finance and the department in the town has done a very good job uh, managing the funds and internal controls.
Uh, are there any questions from anybody here present in the room regarding the expenditures or online?
Anybody online with?
Yeah, they've got two people. And seeing no questions, I'm gonna call the question. Those in favor, pay the bills.
Aye.
Aye. And none against. Thank you. And as is my prerogative to move business around, we're going to move uh, some new business under the new business ten B, and that would be the East Whitelands um, resolution um, regarding their special study, transfer of sanitary sewage facilities. Um, does somebody wanna come up to the podium and explain uh, what's going on for us? You're welcome to come on up. Please state your name and your company, please. Thank you for coming tonight.
And you have to speak uh, close into the microphone at the, in the new one. Was that right?
Good evening. My name is Joe McGloria. I'm a solicitor for East Whitelands Township. I have with me Chuck Faulkner, companion associate, here as a sewer engineer. My first want to thank you for your professional courtesy of moving us up the agenda. And this matter is very simple. We'll try not to think of much.
We don't want to have uh, the township um, have uh, any more burden on your rates or anything else. So just carry on, sir.
Hey, Joe, I always tell employers have to live too.
And you do, and you do.
Right.
Unfortunately, there was Mike's line on the one flat rate tonight. The um, the matter before you tonight is a resolution to change the five thirty-seven plan. The township is selling their sewage facilities to Aqua. So Aqua will be providing sewer service to our township residents. A portion, very small portion of our township flows through our township. Um, there'd be, there will be no change in any agreements that are in place. There'll be no change in any rates that they will charge us for now. All legal relationships have remained the same. I'm legally obligated to keep them the same. Um, D E P, because they wanna get involved in this game for no reason. Has, has decided that you need five thirty-seven plan. I don't know why. I'm going to every township and telling them there's no change. Yet, we're giving in to D E P and just doing it simply because it's easier to litigate. But in my professional opinion, I don't think it's even necessary.
I'm with you.
But it's easier just to do it than it is to litigate. So that matters before you tonight. Simple as that. If you have any questions, Chuck, you have to answer.
I, I have none.
I have none.
I have no questions either.
I'm good with it.
This was pretty well explained to us.
Do we have a resolution number?
Yeah, this is just, I was just gonna, this is a technical issue. The, it's actually, the number's not on there and then it's also backwards. So twenty twenty-two needs to be first and then it's dash twelve. The twenty twenty-two dash twelve will be the resolution for us.
All right. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to, uh, after review of the East Whitelands Township uh, Act five thirty-seven Plan Special Study. Um, and finding, consistent with the East Goshen Township Conference of Plan and Township uh, ordinances, I move that we adopt Resolution two oh twenty-two dash twelve, approving the Act five thirty-seven Special Study and forward it to East Whitelands Township along with uh, component four A of the sewage facilities planning module. I just make a comment that this has been reviewed by our staff and, and uh, municipal authority and their agreement.
Could, could you repeat that?
That was easier for you to say.
I'll say.
All right. Cody's, Cody's gonna get credit for that second thing, second. Um, are there any questions from board members?
How, how the um, how the residents uh, accepting this? Has there been a, a public meeting and, and comment from residents on the, on the sale? Interesting. Okay.
And so there, if I understand correctly, there are, there are about thirty um, East Whitelands Township.
Come through our.
They come through.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, if there are no other questions for the board, are there any questions from any of our participants? Um, Tom or Joanne, do you have any questions? I see none. Uh, we'll uh, call a question then regarding this Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
None against. Thank you very much.
Before I leave, I wanted to mention, I had the opportunity to drive past the township building in Winter Park. And I think it's a fabulous park. It was absolutely gorgeous and you should be very proud of what you've accomplished.
Thank you.
Really nice to say, and I, I agree. It is a great facility. Whether I lived here or not, I'd be making the same observations that it's so well received and it, and, and it's open, so it's, it has a broad visitor uh, population that comes and enjoys it from all around the area. And uh, Public Works, our Parks and Recreation Department has done a great job keeping it current uh, vital and in great shape. So uh, we got in a couple of grant dollars, which helps too with the destination playground, but uh, that's, that's a nice, nice kind of, we'll, we'll pass that on to Jason Lang, our Parks and Recreation Director.
And the, and that would be why we are uh, another, for yet another year of gold medal finalist.
Nationwide.
Nation, it's a nationals um, status. We're in the top four national parks.
Well deserved.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I've had the opportunity, a hundredth township, some force in white privilege. That was impressive.
Well, that's nice to hear. Comment. We appreciate it.
Have a good evening. Thank you very much for coming out tonight.
That was easy, wasn't it?
There you go. So back to uh, back to some old business. We're gonna consider the pickleball court construction grant application. Derek?
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair. This was, this issue was before you very early on in the year. I forget if it was January or February. Uh, but Jason came to us asking about the construction of this pickleball slash tennis court and the renovation project there, and uh, the board gave its approval. So this is just another follow-up approval to actually apply for the grants that are outlined there. Um, the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program can fund up to fifty percent of the anticipated cost of the project. Um, so, you know, we're looking for uh, authorization from the board to go forward with that. I will say the expenses that are left for this project, we're, we're anticipating in twenty twenty-three. So this will be a twenty twenty-three capital project, if you will, and then hopefully we can get, you know, as much as we can get, and then we will fund the rest in twenty twenty-three. But this, this would be the authorization to go ahead and try to get that grant.
All right. Um, yes. Please, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I move to authorize the C E D Greenways Trails and Recreation Program applications to support the pickleball slash tennis court renovation project in up to sixty thousand dollars and sixty, sixty thousand, sixty-four in total.
I'll second.
Terrific. Thank you, David. All right. And um, are there any questions regarding the grant application here on the board?
No.
In the audience or on Zoom?
The only question I have is um, I, I see this is February eighth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, is it safe to assume that the cost everyone to be greater by twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four, whenever reported on?
Yes. Take a page out of Rex's book.
That's honest.
Let me, let me piggyback in on John's comment because we have uh, the ninety-two thousand, five hundred at the moment uh, in our capital budget. Uh, we've got a, uh, at least a scoped quote from um, scope uh, certain specifications from American Tennis Company at a hundred and twenty thousand. It's gonna be more the, the, I would just simply say, from my perspective, the grant is really important. Uh, unless we're gonna open up the coffers further on this, and if the grant doesn't come through, whether or not we're gonna consider scaling back at least to the time being to keep in line with the budget. May or may not be appropriate, but it's a conversation I think we're, we're probably gonna end up having.
Yeah. I think that's fair.
I'm a fan of pickleball. I haven't played it uh, but a few times, but, but it's just relative to what we budgeted, what we have, where it could be, and, and the potential for a grant and how that would be a filler, how effective it'll be. So it's, it's something, I'm sure it'll come up and, but I, I just want to comment from what John said.
That's a fair statement. Um, if there are no other questions?
What are the components though? We're talking painted surface, resurfacing, uh, wings are, I'm, I'm just wondering about which, what kind of cost material might go up in labor?
I think labor and, and I think the macadam to actually build the, the courts themselves.
That's, they're gonna resurface over, not just repaint the.
Well, then there's brand new.
I thought we were converting some of the courts.
That too, right? Believe that too, but this is a different product, actually being new, new.
I think the hundred and twenty is based on four pickleball courts, four new ones.
Yeah, there was.
You paint four and.
Or new.
Oh, is it?
Correct. And then there's one hybrid where there's one tennis slash can be pickleball court.
Or, or tennis, right? Okay, then I will call a question. Uh, those in favor of supporting the grant application? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Um, next, under old business, ten B, continuing discussion on the ABCs and possible structure changes. So um, Derek, you're gonna take it from there?
Sure, thank you. Uh, so this is probably our most open-ended discussion tonight. Uh, as everybody knows, we had that April nineteenth uh, discussion on the ABCs, where we wanna go. Um, you know, I think everybody was of the opinion, we had a lot of ABCs, but I think some of the things people were struggling with, we had a lot of ABCs that did a lot of good work. Um, and you know, we wanna keep people as part of the township and, and have those active people still be active and participate. So I just kinda laid out a memo. I don't know if we came to a hard conclusion on any of that on April nineteenth, even though we had a good discussion. So I kinda wanted to follow back to the board and, and see exactly if I'm on the right track here with some of the points I'm making, if I'm not. Um, so we can kinda put this to bed once and for all and, and, and move on and handle the ABCs the way we see fit. I think some of the things here obviously are a lot of, are not deletion of ABC, but just some of the different ways we can structure it. Um, and you can read that. I won't, there's, there's quite a bit there. So again, I just want the board to have another discussion on, on this memo and, and if I'm, and if I'm barking up the right alley or if I'm not, so.
Well, if I, if I may, I'll just start. I, I, I think it's a good uh, summary of, of things we discussed. I, I'm in agreement with quite a number of them. I, I, I marked several of them as to be determined, including possibility change in name and sustainability and changing that to an E A C. Uh, to be determined, possibly change the name of the Pipeline Task Force to Committee, and to be determined at some point in near future, explore more defined and focused role for the Historical Commission. Uh, other than that, I think that where we are staying there, and I'm fine with the Sustainability Advisory Committee staying the way it is. Uh, the Environmental Advisory Council is a broader one. Um, but um, uh, that, there so overall, I'm, I'm, I'm content with where we are at this point in time without any, um, you know, um, you know, I don't have any of the niggles about, you know, changing anything right now, and so I'm comfortable. That's, that's all I have to say about it.
Yeah, I've had some um, discussion with the Pipeline Task Force and um, they were very pleased to, to feel uh, to hear the board was um, amenable to continuing the Pipeline Task Force, given that some projects that they're working on into the future. And also I gave them an update on the county um, safety and pipeline task force meeting, which I attended a couple of weeks ago. Um, and they, they, I'll just report real quickly that they, they have gotten two RFP responses to the comprehensive safety management and hazard mitigation uh, consulting project that's under review right now. One of the reasons it's taking so long is that they wanna make sure that it not only is county-wide, but also has bespoke um, plans for each municipality uh, in the plan. And they have a plan to have participation by township, um, uh, each township representative seated at the table in that, that program. So I was very pleased about that. And with the Pipeline Task Force, um, could have, can have a role in, input into that uh, hazard mitigation plan for, for the pipelines. So I'm pleased to report that. Um, taking a little bit longer than it should, but it's, it's moving and we have a, a good person there at the, at the county who's championing that program. So I'd, I'd like to see the Pipeline Task Force change the Pipeline Committee or Commission, whichever the board feels uh, would be good. With regard to Sustainability Advisory Committee, again, we've had a pretty extensive conversations and we have liaisons to that group. Um, including meeting last night. And I think the group generally supports and actually sees some benefits to transforming into an E A C. Um, one of the questions they asked was um, if they could be called E A C slash S A C, and I didn't know whether that was possible because of the state.
It's, it's legislated, so there is. It is or it is.
Yeah, so I think it probably has to be E A C. Um, and we talked quite a bit about um, um, what the, the mission of that group would be going forward. I, I'll state that I'm kinda disappointed that the conservancy um, wouldn't be part of that because the E A C, um, when I read the state program, there's a lot of conservancy overlap, but I think one step at a time, I think conservancy can have a liaison relationship with the E A C and vice versa. The E A C can have a liaison relationship with the conservancy and a couple of the other. The E A C can have a liaison relationship with Conservancy and a couple of the other advisory boards invited as necessary so that there's communications. I think that's fine. So I just go on, on, and I'm, and I'm good with everything else that is on here. I think that a little pushback from some of the committees on having to take their own minutes and not have staff people there, but I think that that's important that we emphasize that, you know, they, it's part of the responsibility of the committee to, to do that. So we can continue to kind of insist that we need to do that going forward. And so that's, that's good with my comments.
I'm supportive of what you just said, Dave, as far as the E A C. I can support an E A C transition. And I can support a change in the name of the pipelines. That's where I stand on that.
I do want to touch on the last thing I, I said in the points about the, I guess, the slightly different procedure for accepting applications. I, I think some of the board members felt the way we did it was a little burdensome with every single board and having interviews. So I tried to change it up a little bit and just concentrate the interviews on the, I don't want to say more important, all the ABCs are important, but the ones that are more state mandated. So, and then you can continue to get the resumes for the other ABCs. So that was a, that was a proposal of mine and just want to make sure the board's okay with that.
I've just commented, you probably need to add the E A C onto that list because the.
That is going to be a state.
The board has to appoint the chair or current acting committee.
Sure.
Yeah, but that's a whole process to.
Questions or, or statements regarding the ABCs?
No, Derek just answered my question. I just want to thank the board and all the staff who put work into making these adjustments. And I also want to thank our residents who are involved with our committees.
John, do you mean, do you like to say?
A couple. First of all, I'm in agreement with most of these bullet points. Next time we go through this, we should have numbers so we can refer to them individually. I'm still not sure about Pipeline Task Force. I like what they did very much. But I don't see what they're going to do in the future. So I'm, I have a question mark there. I'm not no, I'm not yes, I'm just not sure. The, the other point I wanted to make was one of your points, Michelle. And that was that we should have on here that everyone on an ABC should have a term and a term limit.
Term, yeah.
And finally, and, and this is not a complaint, but it's, it's a concern. If we go with this pretty much the way it is, the bottom line is that we've always done is add an emergency hazards, hazards task force. So we have.
Possible.
Possibly, but, but that's one more rather than one fewer ABC. And I thought the objective.
To eliminate.
I would not support setting up a hazard mitigation committee while, while we have a Pipeline Task Force or Pipeline Commission, I think.
Okay.
And, and John, to answer your question, we have a couple of things. The last meeting, we talked about participation in this hazard mitigation plan and, and supporting the board's position with the county on that plan. I think it's really important. And the second thing is, we talked about a gas sensors at the blowdown station on the Adelphia and working with Adelphia to try to get them to gauge. I mean, we have, we have a blowdown valve right on the L Pike with no gas sense monitors. And so, so those are kinds of things that the Pipeline Commission or Committee would be.
So, so what you're saying is either or as far as.
For now, our major hazard and what's happening on the county level is they're realizing that perhaps all hazard approach to N G O pipelines isn't most effective, and that's why they're looking at this consulting thing. So it's pipeline centric.
I can live with it.
And again, I think the last time we talked, we said sunset it in two years and see where we are.
And I think it's going to take two years or more to get through that county project.
And, and Michelle, just one other thing, with the E A C, if, if we do agree that transition to an E A C, I would think that you know, the better part of the remainder of the year, you know, explore how, you know, what the process is going to be to do it, what you need to get in place. Yeah, so I don't think of rush and maybe by organization meeting time next year, maybe it's ready to go as a target possibly.
Could we make?
If we agree all, all agree to do.
Could I make a motion to have staff draft the necessary resolution to create an E A C?
Yeah, I think it would be an ordinance, but.
We'll be in ordinance, yeah.
Yeah. But can I make that motion to have staff draft the ordinance to create an E A C?
Staff and solicitor.
I would second that emotion. Emotion, I say.
It's kind of emotional.
Well, that's good.
So David, we would, we would draft it just to move it along for consideration.
Yeah. And that way, and the draft can, I, I would suggest we share with, say, members of S A C so they can see what it looks like.
Sure.
Christie's here, a Christie, and, and share that with them. And then we get a chance to kind of ruminate over it and, and, you know, with the solicitor and you, Derek, it, it should be in pretty good form relative to the legislative.
Put anybody on the spot, but just Christie, do you want to, do you want to give any feedback?
Yeah. And so I was just going to say, I, I think that we patched this out pretty well at the board level. My statement simply is, I was hoping to bring us more in line with other townships and Commonwealth by reducing some of the number of evening commitments for staff and for board members. But I think with restructuring things, how we're going to be restructuring them without having a required note taker and required attendance for the supervisors and staff too. And I, I think that that's going to help alleviate some of the pressures that, that we, we have had. And I think there was one thing I wanted to make a mention, the last bullet point. I think it should say allow the township manager to accept applications for ABCs. And subsequently pass along the applicant to the appropriate ABC by passing the board, board supervisor interview process like you had talked about, Derek. For all of them except for the municipal authority planning commission, zoning hearing board and E A C.
And E A C.
And E A C. And then as far as the motion to direct staff to draft, staff and solicitor to draft the, an ordinance to create an E A C. If there are no other questions concerning that at the board level, we'll open it up to the public. So Christie, do you want to come on up and make a couple of comments?
Couple.
Hi, everyone. First of all, I want to thank you on behalf of the S E C for your wonderful support of our sustainability as well. We got some wonderful feedback. We really appreciate it.
It's great.
So in order to help prepare for this, we first downloaded guidelines for an E A C. And, but I began hearing from other members of the A Cs that I'm familiar with that they don't necessarily follow those particular guidelines. So for the last several weeks, I studied every one of the seventy-two township or borough websites in Chester County. That's how many there are.
I'm sorry.
That was quite tedious.
I learned a lot. So of those seventy-two, nineteen currently have E A Cs. Only one has both an E A C and an S A C. But it's not combined. Those are two separate committees. E A Cs, unlike S A Cs, are authorized by the state originally established in seventy-three and then various changes, but now have been authorized by the state by Act one seventy-seven from nineteen ninety-six, amended Title fifty-three. And there is an organization called We Conserve P A that is established by the state. And there's a network of D A Cs. There are a hundred and seventy-two currently E A Cs in the state. So that's a huge network that we will have access to. There's all kinds of information and sharing of committees, et cetera. We belong to a couple of much smaller organizations now as a stack, main one being with our cog group of six, you know, local townships and a temporary group that is about to finish. But this would give us a much bigger network. There is a lot more information about grants that we would love to access and help pass along to staff, such as the recent one that we worked on for store management, but it came up at the very tail end.
Yeah.
We'd like to get a job to help you all apply for more grants. There is a lot of free material available to B A Cs through the state. Some have received hundreds of, of saplings and trees and indigenous plantings, et cetera. I mean, hundreds and hundreds that are being given out at, say, community days to, to local residents. And the, the sticking point for us, which we have now figured out, this, there are three to seven voting members on an E A C. And all of them, and every single one of the nineteen in Chester County are all volunteers. They're all residents. And the, some of them list a board liaison, a few add liaisons from particularly planning and parks and a few other committees. But one way we thought to help along with that, rather than asking members of those committees to come be a liaison to us, we would ask members, and we already discussed this last night, members of our committee to be a liaison to them and attend when there's something on their agenda that is relevant. But then that doesn't overburden other committees. So there are working committees within, you know, within the larger state liaison structure. So we see only positives here. And there are, by the way, Derek, this We Conserve P A has a whole list of current ordinances and I accessed it today. So I'll be happy to send you that link. It's, there's a bunch of them. It won't take much to, to figure out what we want. So I appreciate the, the discussion about waiting till January, but we're ready to go. So if you all are happy with an ordinance and there are plenty of models, then we might be able to proceed sooner. Okay?
Thank you.
Does that cover?
That's.
Christie, not to, I know you did a lot of work so far and I appreciate it, not to put more on you, but is there, I mean, because if we're going to work with our solicitor, come up with an ordinance. You just said there's quite a bit of ordinances on that. Are there specific ones you prefer or the other? I'd love that feedback so I can take it our solicitor.
I haven't downloaded them all yet, but we already discussed that on that.
You can, you can go to East Bradford. They have a good E A C.
There's a bunch of really great.
But you know, Christie, coming back to the, the legislation and the, and the mission and the so-called charges, if you will, that are in the legislation. There's, there's not, it's not as if there's a monitor that's going to come out and say, well, you do, you didn't do any of that there, did you? What's this? There, you, you, we, we will adapt to our, our way of doing things here under that umbrella very effectively without abusing it, I'm sure.
There's no requirement. Every one of these non-chaos bases does not have a staff member or a board member as the voting then. And I know plenty of people on these and they wouldn't break the law, so.
And by, by the way, I like the way you pronounce liaison. That, that, that's fun. See how they pronounce? I loved it. It's very good.
Thank you so much, Christie. It was, that was quite a tedious task.
Yeah.
I am sure you do. I know I did too.
Largest townships in Chester County. I mean, there's one that has thirty thousand residents.
For different.
One that has twenty-three thousand. But then there's three of us that have, you know, just around nineteen or twenty.
Right.
We're, we're one of the largest.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I learned a lot.
Well, good. Thanks, Christie.
So Eric, would you like to come up and give us a little bit of feedback as well?
The result, the motion is on the table.
Yes, the motion is on the table and Eric has a comment regarding, regarding them. Yes.
My, my, my.
Thanks.
My comments just on the first two bullet points.
Yes.
I'm personally opposed to getting rid of this reporting secretary, just because I feel that having the same person always take minutes makes it consistent and provides a record for you guys and for the residents as opposed to say, person A doing it one time and another person, you know, doesn't really take notes. I know if I had to take notes. I'm going to be absent.
Well, I think the, not to interrupt you, Eric, but I think the goal was to keep it the same person, just have that person be specific to the ABC.
When you organize, say, this will be, you'll be the secretary for the year.
I guess I'd like to see what you're actually saving when they have tradition. While we, you know, really.
Yeah, that position, it's all, all the liaison and note taking position.
You're asking us to use up the township. You're just providing us some support.
Okay, that's fair enough.
I mean, we should have some support, I'd say, you know. And the second one, you know, we, we run pretty self-sufficient rather liaison, but it does help sometimes to have staff members there that is aware of other things going on, you know.
I think that it's really intended so that there can be a little bit of flexibility so that we don't necessarily have to have, if, if things work out and we can't get a staff member to a particular, if, if Derek can't, if he's thin and he can't get somebody there, it's not intended to be.
Everyone. Isolate, isolate, completely separate.
Well, ten, ten, ten years on the boards, I don't know. We had someone there all the time anyways.
And that's really, it's just to kind of loosen it up a little bit so that when Derek is thin and people have been stretched a little further, he can say, well, maybe you should just skip that meeting tonight. So it's, it's really going to be up to Derek's discretion.
I agree with you that in practice, there, that has been the case sometimes, to just more codify it somewhere and saying that that's the case.
And really for having, it's, it's not always helpful to have a board member at every single meeting because we can only really do so much. So it's important, though, that you have a liaison on the board so that you can say, our liaison is John. And so, or our liaison is Michelle. And you're, make sure we have the minutes. And then we'll make sure that if there is anything to report back to the ABC, we can't be there. Then we'll make sure that the chair gets that information.
And even proactively, Eric, if there's something the committee is going to consider that you really feel you need staff or board member. I mean, I try to make as many of mine liaison meetings as I possibly can. But if there's some, you know, somebody says, we really need a board member here, but we're going to talk about this. And it would be great to help have the liaison here either to provide input or to, to take our message back to the board, you know, that would be great.
So you, you know, you can call either the manager, call Derek or call a liaison and say, you know, we'd like to, you know, it'd be great if you can attend the meeting.
Yeah, just a quick.
There's that. So that's the proactive aspect.
Intended to be that we're not going to have liaison for staff.
Lastly, to mention term limits. We tried this before. I don't, there only going to be so many years. But usually not a long line of people. So I don't see why we don't leave it alone. And at the end, say my term's three years. And you say, well, we don't want to renew you this time.
Give somebody else another shot.
Right. That's, and that's the intention. But Futurist doesn't have any term, they don't specifically have any expiration for their term. And so we just, it's more to bring them in line with everybody else. And you can see that there's not going to be, there's, there's not a line of people beating down the door, trying to get to any of our ABCs. But you know, then suddenly we might have an influx of volunteers when new residents come in and when other residents retire and they find that they have time.
I, and, and I also think the, the, the matter of term limits is one where it is a more, it's an objective policy as opposed to gee, Eric's, Eric's looking to be reappointed again. We have somebody else here. Eric's been on the board. We'd like to get somebody new in. And avoiding that subjective, possibly offending or bruising somebody. And, and, and that's, that's part of my thought about term limits is to just make it a policy and it's, it's objective. But by the same token, the back of my mind has got an asterisk on that saying, pending review by the board and at their discretion of potential override of that, depending on if there's no one else to serve and the other person wants, you know, that's so. It, it's a, it's a little squishy at the moment, but I, I am a term limits advocate, even in an ABC environment for, for the reasons I stated. So, but I, I get it. There, there aren't people.
It's not a hard thing. It's just a simple matter of bringing, making sure that every ABC member knows that there is a term limit.
Kind of interesting on the term limit thing. And one of the things that Christie surfaced in her study of the, of the nineteen E A Cs in Chester County is that the real active ones had voted members, the seven members as, you know, through the ordinance and resolutions. But also had associate members.
Yes.
Non-voting members who were actively participating in those committees. And some of them had an extensive list of associate members who serve this, you know, chairing committees, subcommittees. serve this, you know, chairing committee, subcommittees and, and special projects and things like that. So you know, I wish we had the luxury of having a, um, cornucopia of volunteers.
Projects.
Uh, so, but, so I think that's just so, you know, with the term limits, you could still be an active participant and volunteer.
Maybe we need to recruit a list. Yeah.
And you know, even planning commissions now under the, uh, under Act two forty-seven allow for
So there is a motion on the table. Are there any comments from, uh, either of our folks on Zoom? And seeing none, I'm going to call the question then.
Want to repeat the motion.
I was going to say the motion wants to.
Staff look at, um, the necessary ordinances to create an EAC through Scoach and Township and present it to the board for approval.
Prepared draft, yeah, prepared draft.
Okay, and those in favor? Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Business, um.
The future, the future.
Futurists committee sent out the older one. Survey, I have to say, was a fascinating read. And really interesting stuff. So we, we have, we have representatives here from the Futurist Committee.
Yeah, we have Jeff and Brandon here and then Tom is online. So whoever.
So does anybody want to come up then?
Brandon, where are you going? Where are you leaving? What, what's going on here, Brandon? You're too young to leave East Goshen. We wish you the best. So I'm sure it's a good move. Have script that guy. All right, there you go. There's the introduction. You know, we care for you.
So we've all seen the slides, uh, just to kind of quickly recap the exact summary. Lot of support from majority support government respondents in township for uh, trees and landing off the trail.
Keep into the microphone, Brandon.
Uh, so overall, on the survey as a whole, uh, very good response rate, almost as much as we got in the last survey. I know there was a number of people that uh, their appreciation and the ability to provide. Uh, this was representative of the township overall in terms of census demographics, uh, maybe just one other. Thing to point out on the open space piece was, uh, I think general a lot of the comments revolved around people not even knowing what was possible there in terms of location. So that's something interesting. Uh, I know there's a lot of other stuff there. Maybe I'll, I'll pause here. Questions.
Just make a comment that old rich people don't want to pay for benefits, young, what poor people want to pay.
Got that right?
Yep, what's wrong with this picture?
The baby boomer generation.
I want to read, I want to read this one quote, no eminent domain at the Hicks farm, okay? You can end it, but you won't because then the truth about finance comes out, doesn't it? Well, we ended it. I'm waiting for the truth about finance. Some of, some of the quotes are really on point. Some of them were and some of them. My concern, I, I want to say this, my concern, um, and, and I appreciate and I don't want you to think I don't appreciate this survey because I know how hard it is. I used to do them in the business.
This is fantastic.
Um, but when we come right, right at the front here, uh, attractive street light. I don't know exactly how much that would cost, but that's going to cost a lot more. And, um, I was afraid that we would come up with something like that. Um, that was, I'm the money, I'm, I watch the money more than anything else. That's, I don't know. Street lighting or lighting along the trail would be very difficult to do. Uh, it's something, and I can say this because I wasn't here, it's, it's something that should have been thought of when they decided to build the trail, not afterwards. The retrofit, street lighting, uh, will be a very difficult thing. Especially because the street is, um, uh, owned by department transportation essentially. Um, you have to deal with them and EPA and everybody else.
Um, John, one of the interesting ideas is that with five G coming in, you might be able to put five G poles in with lighting and have them take work.
That, I, and I would be fine with something like that. If we find a way to pay for something.
Idea that was.
But then I, I went to, um, how about, uh, solar?
Yeah.
But then you go along the trail and there's too much shade and anytime you have a cloudy day or, or, um, snow or something like that, then you don't have solar.
Well, the other, the other issue that we run into with lighting the trail of, but see it, remember this is specified to the Paley Pike corridor as it is from three fifty-two to Boot Road. Not any further. And so the street lighting along here. It could be. It could be done. Um, but again, do we want our trails to be used beyond dusk before and before dawn? That, that's, that's because the rest of the trail system is dust to dawn. Is, is not, uh, dawn to dusk rather is for, for, you know, usage of the trail. So um, right now there's not like, there's a restaurant, it's not like there's a restaurant along this, this corridor at this time, that's right there on the trail that would be the a reason to light the trail.
So that's my concern. I, and, and on the other hand, I like the idea of benches and carve-outs. We have benches, a couple of benches out front right now. I think there should be more. I think that would be nice.
Yeah.
Carve-outs where people can actually sit and relax.
Except there's too many, there's too many boxes though, John. So it was really, the comments really are very interesting and, and it's not to minimize any, anybody's comment. The fact is, is that, you know, everybody's entitled to an opinion and this gives them a great opportunity.
And everybody has one.
Yeah, give them a great opportunity to put their stuff out there. I, I did make a couple of other comments. If you have any other comments, go ahead.
How surprised were you about, how common is it that fifty percent of survey respondents would actually write comments like this?
That's not normal in, uh, the online survey.
It's not, is it?
What it says to me, it what, yeah, what it says to me is that, um, there are a lot of, this, this is a great vehicle. People don't come to the meetings. They don't get a chance to zoom, but we have the, the opportunity now interactive even as it is. Um, and the, the value of these surveys to try and get the pulse and at least have an, an, an option for people to respond. Get something, um, you know, out of their, their, uh, their thought process and, and submit it to the township. Um, it, it says to me that there are a lot of people out there that are thinking about these things and we gave them an avenue to at least respond back to us. Um, part of me wants to say, gee, how can we respond back to the residents on the results of the survey? We're giving them the results of the survey, but I for one haven't had a chance to fully read all of these um, additional comments to sit down with it for a few hours and start to say, well, you know, there were comments on this, 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 and this, that with nothing else, we could put together a, um, you asked the question. Here's a response. Here are the basic, uh, tabulations of the survey. But here's some further information from various comments that were submitted on X, Y, Z, that we can put in an FAQ on the, on the website and say we, we appreciated all the comments. Here's a number that, that either were tabulated, that were similar. And here's a response to it where we are. I think there's, we, we, we don't just say this is over. We let this conversation go further with information back to the residents on, on further digestion of us on these responses. That, that's my, that's my, I know you're up there, Tom, so.
I have a couple of specific statements regarding that because a, a number of people said that they wanted to, to see if we can acquire the M T or T bank. We can't do that because they're privately owned and, um, the M and T bank is actually going to be developed by a local business owner. And so this gives us an opportunity to say on, like you said, of some of the.
Fill in some of the blanks because there are a lot of questions asked to say, what about this?
But then like, the other question is like, you know, a, a comment, too many dogs in the playground, there's no enforcement. Uh, that's a big problem. So, you know, um, pothole on Boot Road at CBS. And some people are under the impression that, um, a lot of people are under the impression that the, the dams have been breached by the township because we wanted to do that. The township did not want to reach any dam. It was required by the E P and the, um,
Army Corps.
The Army Corps of Engineer. Um, and so we didn't have a choice.
And they didn't supply any money.
They didn't give us the money for it. And so the fact is, is that this gives us an opportunity to put that information out and that's really important. Very valuable information for us to put out. Um, and so, um, like I said, I appreciate it. I had some comments and, and we should be responding to our residents and we can do that on our website. But can we actually push it out to the residents that responded?
Do we get any, is there an email required? I can't remember why. Is there an email required?
It's anonymous, comes through.
Yeah, but I wonder if we, can you push it out to the same group of people you pushed it out to with some responses?
Well, from a distribution standpoint, uh, it was distributed to everybody in the township that we had.
Right.
Emails for.
Right.
So certainly that's some of the work to go back out through the same channel. The only channel that was down, the difference between this survey and the last survey was the, the, like, kind of time.
Oh, right.
Um, but otherwise everything else was constant.
It's difficult though to, um, other than the statistical information to put out in a go comments made by people, uh, that are one-off.
Yeah.
We can't do that, but we can actually answer some of the questions like, we can, we can say.
Well, for instance, here, here, here's a one-off that was in there. There, someone asked a point, I think it was a longer comment. Um, covered a number of topics and it was a well-written, uh, comment. And one of the last things was something about, um, uh, why can't restaurants, uh, have liquor licenses in the township? Applebrook Country Club does. What, why can't we? And there's an explanation there. They have a special license uh, to private club and, but that's information that people don't know.
Right.
And so that's why I think that, uh, was a, a few of the one-offs maybe warrant a question, almost like what I've referred to in the past. With some municipal newsletters have, it says, recently I heard a township resident ask. And it's a question about something and it's a good question and you give an answer and, but you publish it to everybody so that they learn a new bit of information based upon one resident's inquiry. It's a one-off, but it has value for the broader population of residents. And we could pick out some of those here, but also again, I was referencing going through these and kind of collating them a little bit and saying, here's one theme. Let's, let's respond in a paragraph or two with an FAQ on that one. And, and package it, whether you get back to them electronically, we publish it and say it's online for further responses to your, to your, uh, comments.
The problem with that.
Yeah.
Is that you may get into the habit of telling people why you can't do what they want you to do.
That's true, John.
Well, there, there, well, that's only part of the story because they're, they're, part of the response could be, you know, why we are interested to do it. We're not trying anymore. We're, we're.
That way. You know, I, I think there are factual, uh, what we're talking about are, are factual things here that that we are, we are no longer a dry community, a restaurant could have a liquor license.
But there's a finite amount of licenses allowed.
Well, that, that's exactly right.
There are some factual things we could do. And I like the idea of, you know, heard from a resident and just pick the questions that where we can explain a misunderstanding about like the dams being breached. We didn't do that. That was a D E P and they didn't give us any money.
But John, but John, I, I share your concern and we talked about this before about surveys creating expectations that are um, that are not fully expressed. And, and that's why I don't want to leave some of these things hanging when there've been inquiries out there. Um, so the people either are left with, they never responded back. I don't know what they're doing. So, so I, I think there's more to do with this. Brandon, you can't leave.
All right, yeah.
When are you going?
Come on up if you don't mind because the, because then Tom can hear you. Because at Zoom, people can't hear you when you're.
So I think, you know, the, this is working and this is the intent of, I think, these surveys. This survey specifically focused on, uh, some of the issues that we constantly hear around the trail. Or against and then trying to, okay, well, let's see. Some of those comments, and I think this is going to be something that from a, from a survey sample. The board is going to have to figure out how they want to address this. You're going to have overflow comments that have nothing to do with right? Liquor license don't have a lot to do with the trail unless we're talking about fresh. But that's all I think a, uh, kind of a dividend of just communication, both
Yes.
Good and bad between residents and county townships, right? And so there's an opportunity there for the board and for the township at large to look at and calling beyond the topic of the survey. What are these other things?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so there's certainly things that you pick out of here to figure out.
No, no, go on. I, I have an or.
Or.
The board or the township could look at it or
Right, and so that's where I'm.
Futurists committee could look at it and start picking out trends and themes and suggesting what to do with them.
And we talked about that in our last meeting, right? And so, um, part of that is, John, you brought up the cost of there's more than an effect of this cost, right? There's access to the trail, there's all these other things. And so delegating that out to the appropriate, whether it is Futurist or we go to environmental and say, hey, what, what would it take to get solar in you or what, you know, how, what are the other ways? That as well, from the resident feedback, right? Because on one hand, you have majority support uh, for trees and lighting, you have really strong support for connector trails. So that on one hand, you have to try to explore that and, and get back specifically on those topics, right? But again, with the understanding that we didn't do this with the expectation that anything necessarily done from it. It's, it's directionary for an informational, for you, the board and for us.
Yeah, it's future planning.
And I think you can get hung up in a lot of the common comments. Um, I think it's easy to do. They're there. There's certainly good comments in there. We can certainly put an FAQ on our portion of the website as we start to see more and more things coming up. Tom has put together a summary report, uh, to be included in the newsletter that would be more the executive level report. Uh, not including the verbatim, but, um, you know, all that data is public.
And, and you know, Tom, as you're listening, uh, for that article in the newsletter, we, this kind of conversation that we're having about keeping this conversation going from the survey with some responses to look forward to from the township and in the in the weeks or the months ahead to many of the comments you raised. You can make a reference in that article that we are considering those things so that we can get back and again, keep, keep stimulating. We want to know what the residents are thinking and we, and we don't want to let them, um, uh, feel that we're not being responsive after we've asked questions and then the questions have come from it. I, it's a, it's a I don't like the word, but it's an organic process. We have to keep, you know, it's, it, it, keep, keep it moving. I, I think there's real value in that.
I'm glad we got the results. Glad we did the survey. Uh, something I wanted, well, one, thank you, you guys and all the ones for everything. Glad to be, that I was able to be a part of this, very small. A very small part of this. Uh, something that I was interested by is usually people want things but don't want to pay for it. Still, when you look at trail amenities, over majority of people want to pay for it and connect your trails. Still, when you look at trail amenities over majority of people want to pay for it and connect your trails forty seven percent. And I think if you do connect your trails, obviously the percentage of boat trees can be much higher or one of the other neighborhoods is going to have a, be willing to pay more than, you know.
Yeah.
My port of the township, they're like, okay, how are we going to get up to the trail? They're not going to be as willing to pay for it. People who are where they can get connected to the trail want to be connected to the trail. I thought that was interesting. Um, and I did a small sample survey size when I was at the pole for ten hours on Tuesday. I think people are under the understanding that it's, you know, they're willing for, I think people are willing to give us a chance of, let's say, I'm just throwing a number message, we're going to increase taxes. But if we were to increase it twenty five dollars a year, it's two bucks a month. What does that sort of get people in return if they actually can see?
Yeah.
You know, if we do twenty five dollars, whatever, and they say, okay, well, we have connected trails or now we have tree street lighting. I think that also engages residents because they probably know the way their taxes go. But if they see that an increase actually used for something that they wanted, it could also increase a, a better relationship of communication between both.
Good point.
I had one other comment and I don't remember what it was, so.
Really interesting, Cody. I was talking to, uh, to Jason. I noticed the other day I was, uh, having to be on Bailey Pike when school was letting out and kids walking the backpacks on the trail. And there were two kids with skateboards. Um, and one of the kids was, uh, from New Kent and they're, they're saying, we need to figure out how to get over to the trail safely to use that to, to get to, to the school. Um, and so you're starting to see people in the communities.
Kind of connecting the dots.
Figuring out, you know, how can I connect my community to the trail? And we always said it was going to be a build and they will come kind of, you know, strategy. And, and that's starting to trickle right now. You're starting to, you're starting to see it a little bit and, uh, um, you know, I saw somebody pushing a baby stroller, um, today. I saw somebody running the other day and, and so it was, people are starting to, to, to figure out that connectivity. So it's almost this organic process. So, you know, that's organic and some planning involved. And then some data from these surveys that support, you know, what, what people want.
Yeah.
Kind of interesting.
I, I think this whole issue of connect trails over the next, this next decade is going to be a front and center agenda item for the board to try and figure out how to, how to do it and respond to the residents and you know, making the priorities of where it is. I, 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 I think it's the beginning of, of, you know, again, more good conversation here and responses back and.
Exactly. We don't have to make these decisions tonight, but it's.
No.
The idea of like a future, you know, we're having a conversation.
Yeah.
Future, what it looks like.
Yeah. I don't have any more comments at this point.
I'm in favor of those feeder trails too, but I think we have to get the main trail done.
Well, you know, again, priorities, John, I agree and, and, and not getting ahead of ourselves. I, and I, and it's not to criticize the prior boards, but all of a sudden, you know, in, in, when we came onto the board, even me now in my sixth year, going on seventh year, finishing the term next year. There were major projects, all these projects were underway. The Paoli Pike Trail, they were talking about a town center. Uh, when there was active planning associated with it, there was the Hershey's Mill, there was the, and then we had the reservoir, Milltown. And all these things were, and great expectations were created to get it done. And it was overwhelming. And, and the one small municipality got all of these things going and we, we just couldn't, couldn't, uh, you know, handle all the balls at one time. And, and, and again, we've gotten the feedback on the Milltown Dam Reservoir Park project. And people were frustrated because we, we got too much in front of us that we couldn't meet the targets and the dates. So, uh, it, it's a good point. And as I said along, these trail, uh, matters are generational projects and, and you keep them going. But don't expect them to be done in three or four years. It, you're, it's going to be ten, fifteen, twenty years for many of these things.
I was just going to say, so Tom, Tom is on Zoom. Um, Tom, do you have any comments regarding the survey and, um, can you send the executive summary to the board before it, um, hits the newsletter?
Uh, sure, sure. Um, yeah, I just summarized basically what Brandon said and, you know, some other comments, uh, but I'd be happy to do that. Yeah, really good discussion amongst everybody. Um, you kind of hit on most of the things that I wanted to kind of capture. I think the main, the one theme that we didn't talk about that much or that I didn't hear in the group was this whole, uh, issue of open space, which uh, was a pretty big discussion item as you go through the, uh, all the verbatims. And one of the things that came, came through clear to me is that residents really like the open field of East Ocean and they're willing to pay for it going forward. And I think as a follow-up thing, I've got a little note saying, we need to start looking at conservation trust and opportunities. But more importantly, we need to kind of educate the community on where the opportunities are because that was the other thing that I think somebody mentioned. We don't really, most of the residents don't know where you could increase open space. And there are about, oh, there's only two or three or four. So, uh, you know, be important to kind of start looking at that. Uh, the other thing is, uh, you know, the connector trails, I think you mentioned that, that was pretty high. Interest there to, to connect the trails, even though, uh, there's a kind of a vocal, uh, negative, uh, vibe out there on the trail in general. There are a lot of people, I think, that, uh, are supportive of the trail connectors. And they're also willing to pay a little bit higher taxes to, uh, put these things in, into, into play. Uh, one of the challenges go, going forward from my perspective.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to ask you a question regarding the, um, connector trails. Do you actually, in the executive summary, do you have it broken down so that, um, you have so many comments were pertaining to connector trails, so many comments pertaining to open space and so on?
Comments, you mean?
Yeah.
No, I do not.
That would be the start to breaking out all these comments to categorize them. I think that would be of value.
I did that in a couple of, I did that in a couple of areas, but, uh, man, there are a lot of them. It took me. I was.
Or we do it as a group to break that. That's the first start really is to, to do some sorting out and housekeeping of them. Categorize them and see which ones can warrant, uh, the F A Q responses back, et cetera. That, that would be the way I would start to be pointed apart.
Actually, I made a note, Michelle, um, to maybe do these F A Qs in our next newsletter contribution and follow up on these things. One of the things that we tried to do with the survey, if you'll recall, is we tried to educate the community on some things like how much the taxes are and how much open space we have and that kind of thing. It's clear that we still have a lot of education to continue to do. So.
Yeah.
That's a great idea. We'll try and, we'll try and craft something and maybe we can include it in the next newsletter. Maybe we can figure out another way you guys can do it, you know? So we'll, we'll, we'll try and come back to you with that.
That would be excellent. I'm going to take up Mike's point. I, I'm not. I'm not against doing F A Qs. That's fine. But that's not really anything. I, I would like to know specifically if you guys in the futures committee can say, okay, here's one thing you can do. Here's one thing that people want. Here's another thing that people want. And then we can sit here and say, um.
Can we budget it? Can we budget it? Can we do it?
Budget it. Derek, go out and.
What's our timeframe to do? Yeah, I, I think to put them into, um, practical, uh, a tier of some things that are practical. Can we do them in a, you know, in a, in a short-term period, midterm, a long-term?
Expensive.
But we, we, we did talk about that briefly. I know what, I can't remember, so I'll come over and I'll give up first, especially for the option where we can have open space. I don't know which committee would be in charge of that, but being able to identify, okay, these are the eight plots. This is what we can do for conservation. If the township wanted to buy it, this is how much it would cost, like rough estimates.
Yes.
And I know that we also talked about, which, um, was already mentioned regarding the lighting options and these other many, he's kicking out to other boards. Because I know like there's maybe solar options, you know, the E A C may find some type of grants that we could apply for things about any better. So I think we're on the right track when it comes to, I mean, we're delegating, but being able to use the resources from the other.
Yeah, there's a lot to cultivate from this. There's no doubt about it, Cody.
Risk management, we have a process called totem pulling where we, we, we put it on a grid and we say high impact, low cost. And, and we don't want to spend any, any time on low impact, high cost stuff. We want to spend a lot of time on high impact, low cost stuff.
That's the low, low hanging fruit.
Totem pole those things and, and develop our priorities going forward, uh, to, to, to do that. And I, I think that would be kind of a great process to think.
That would be a good, that would be a good, uh, uh, process to use on the, uh, trails, the connector trails, David. The ones that low cost that are going to hit most people.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, Tom, for that, that, uh, that method, uh, for, for that specific, uh, area of, of infrastructure and recreational improvement. Yeah, I agree.
Good discussion though. Thanks, uh, thanks, bro. I got, I got a lot of notes here.
And, and John, you said you're in favor of the connector trails, you want to see the trail first. So I'll, I'll throw this out, which is does finishing the trail increase the utility? Or just connecting?
It's a tough question. It's a tough question. Um, I, I.
And is that a better use of funding?
That plays exactly into this method, this totem pole.
If we talked about it last.
There was one comment in here, uh, let's get over, let's get the trail to West Coast. And that's what we've been trying to do now. If maybe that isn't so important, then the feeder trails might be there too. I, I rode with Mark Miller today. Uh, we did a bunch of exploring.
Oh, good.
But we, we, we think we came down three fifty-two and we were trying to imagine where a trail would come down from Hershey's Mill.
Tough.
And, um, I first pass, it's the first pass, but it would be very, very difficult, even though Hershey's Mill owns a lot of the property. But we would come down one. Then you have, uh, residences with the houses near to the road and the, um, the the garden center over there and everything like that. Um.
Yeah, but it would be.
Just one.
But it would be so easy to put one in for Brando. If we go with the alternate direction that I, that, that, that I had brought.
Every trail, large trail project has these challenges.
Yeah.
Uh, barriers and so that whether it's, whether it's a, uh, a landscape barrier or whether it is a, um, a developed barrier. Um, it, it, every trail has them. And that's why the Skookel Valley Trail couldn't be done all at once. There were just too many barriers. So, and, and you go all the way down to the Belmont exit of the, uh, expressway with the Maniuk Bridge. That was a major barrier to connect Lower Marine Township with Maniuk and the Skookel Trail. Took years, but it got done with a lot of money. And that's the same thing with the, the current extensions up in the north in the Skookel Valley Trail and, and my Chester Valley Trail.
And I think just also just observing people's behaviors because, John, some of the school kids I saw. I want to talk to, to John because some of the school kids I saw were over in your neighborhood and they were coming up the trail and then cutting across by the dentist office there and then walking up and coming back on, on the other side.
You kind of see the pattern.
Kind of see a pattern of where they're going and they're trying to figure out who's using it, where, where they're connecting to.
And to connect just to Colonial would be easy with the trail because, um, they're so far, at least the, the pastors are very cooperative.
Yeah.
If anything they want to do.
And see, that's the some. Yeah. And John, that's, that's the idea of this totem pole, the so-called, you know, Rick Smith would always use the low hanging fruit, low, low cost, higher impact. Well, um, and, and the barriers will be lower to get it done. And, and, you know, you see some of these, I think many of them are, are silly, but, uh, there's, there are a number of them, particularly in West Whiteland Township where they require sidewalks to be put in. And you see these stems of sidewalks are in the middle. Uh, who knows when they're ever going to get connected, but it was developers' obligation for the ordinance. They had to put it in. And they just sit out there like a, you know, a, a.
Sword thumb.
Sword thumb. But those are the kind of things that, to, to, to begin to pick away at them. And somebody says, well, you put one in there. Yeah, but we could do that. We had the easement that we, we, we got right into it. It was low cost. We, it was a pretty straight run. And, and you start to build these segments again, generationally. It's, it's a generational thing.
But you got to keep it broke. I know Jeff did open a can of worms over here, but, uh, I don't know if it's something that we can take to our, I don't know, it's my first year, but whenever we're starting to the budget and everything, seeing what we have a, you know, greater discussion on the board wants to consider connector trails instead of finishing the trail right away or just having a larger conversation. I'm open to having it. I don't know if I'm feeling hard one way or the other.
I'm going to open another can of worms. Uh, one of the, one of the committees is, remains very active in my old haunts. In East Bradford Township is the Trails Committee. And they're, they're using the references to the open space program that was highly successful in East Bradford. Uh, pretty much done now with the major acquisitions they've had over the last twenty years. And now it's connecting these, these resources. And, um, it's, 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 it's a very active. And of course they're using an official map that we had in the township that would showed open space and building in some of these components. It's an, it's an active meeting every month. Uh, but they're looking at creating the priorities and, and doing the, the, some of the study and the assessments about where to go and that find its way into the budget. But again, over years and it's, this is not nearly, uh, a conversation for, and a discussion in a program for next year or two. This is the, this is part of the future of the township.
But I think, I think Michelle made a comment and, and I, what I would like to see happen, and, and again, I'm in, I'm in the build it and they will come mode. Um, there are some, some neighborhoods who want to connect to the trail who might not have as many barriers as other neighborhoods. You know, the, I did the same thing mentally when I drive up and down three fifty-two, trying to figure out how to connect the villages down to the trail and stuff. But, but there are some other neighborhoods that might be fairly easy to connect. And the other thing I think is that, you know, I, I, I think the alternate route we're talking about, uh, connecting with the business park um, is going to be a real asset. I, I think those people love to walk and, and, you know, they're in a marked street now. We can get the business community supporting that alternate route. Um, but so I think maybe what, what I would think about is let's look at the existing trail, look at the adjacent neighborhoods and figure out which one is the the easiest to do. And then maybe start talking to the residents in that neighborhood and, and say, you know, let.
I, I agree with that. And, and that's, that's a good suggestion. Um, here's the thing.
I agree.
And, and this is not a rationalization excuse. We've got the, uh, Hershey's Mill, uh, dam project. We've got the Milltown pond. Uh, going right now. We have.
Couple sewer projects.
I was going to mention the, uh, West Town, um, Treatment Plant and your neighborhood, David, where we've got to put a new pipe in for a million and a half or whatever it's going to be. This is the time when we need, uh, a committee, say a futurist committee, to kind of grab the baton and move ahead. Not scattershot, but give us one or two or three things we could do. Did you, are you familiar with the diagram? The top is, um, good to do, bottom is bad to do. This is expensive. This is cheap. We want to go cheap and this will do. Could you guys do a project like that and point out some of these things that we can?
I'm going to go, I'm going to go a step further and ask, Derek, can you possibly send Futurist Committee the, um, the alternate plans, the segments that we looked at, one, two, three and five?
One to me.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll have Derek said, okay, so.
I can send it.
The alternate trail that we're looking at. Um, we're going to have to send it through. We're going to have to send it through your committee anyway. But if you can look at it as it pertains to some of these items in this survey and then make some recommendations, I think that would be really helpful.
And Michelle, I want to kind of, um.
Pick you back?
Well, yes. Um, we're losing, we're losing Brandon. I think we have a couple vacancies. I think we need to get a little bit of a recruitment letter or, or note in, in the website to say, we're really looking for people that want to look ahead. Trails are going to, and connection is going to be an important, something to stimulate to try and get some applicants to support the folks in the futures committee. You, you, I mean, you guys can't do this all by yourself. You need a, a vibrant, active group and, and you're down to three once Brandon leaves, right?
We're down to two. Thank you, Mike.
Then if we want this futurist committee to be vibrant and, and.
We'll make sure that there's, um, an, a, a mention in the newsletter. Um, it's, uh, at the end of our, I was going to say, the deadline is tomorrow to um, get stuff in. There's a little bit of wiggle room on it, but, um, we can at least get like an ad looking for volunteers for all of our ABCs, but specifically.
Put a little sidebar in the news, so.
There are vacancies here.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think if this is such a dire situation, we might want to specifically mention. Yeah, let's get something.
Thank you.
Oh, no problem, Tom.
I may apply to the futures committee after my turn.
I'd like to have you on there.
Thank you so much.
Jeff, thank you. Great. All the best. When, when do you leave? All right, well. All right, well, we're wishing you the best.
And it's going to be hard to replace.
All right, well, I hate to tell you, but we're a little behind, so um, let's go ahead and. The last of our new business is actually considering the support of West Town Township's minor text and math amendment to comprehensive plan. And as a neighboring township. Continuous contiguous municipalities must be notified when the comprehensive plan amendments are proposed.
Little impact and I'm supportive of it. Let's just do the motion.
Yeah, this is this is all because of Cray Billy Farm and West Town. Yeah, absolutely. West Town needs to amend their comprehensive plan to reflect them purchasing of Cray Bill.
All right. Oh, you got it. No, you got it.
Madam Chair, I move that the Board Supervisor supports West Town Township's efforts to amend their future land use plan and map within their comprehensive plan and authorize the Township Manager to send a letter to that.
John, um, I don't have any questions regarding this. Does anybody on the board have any questions? Are there any questions regarding this amendment in the room or online? Seeing none, I'm going to call question those in favor of supporting the comprehensive plan amendment to West Town. I.
Kudos to West Town.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yep, they did. And then we have standing issues and projects. So um Hershey's Mill Dam Project.
We we talked about this, Madam Chair, a little bit in the treasurer's report, but everything's moving along nicely. We're. Starting to see some bills, but that's a good thing in this instance because it's starting to come to fruition. I think, you know, talking to Mark Miller, Dave. I think we're looking at. I I think, well, to get the boardwalk.
I I walked around with it with Mark.
Pretty neat.
And it's terrific. You could you could walk around there right now.
Once we see that boardwalk, what a neat neat little.
They have.
Visit is going to be for people.
They have the racks out and everything.
Yeah, I saw that galvanized stuff there.
So they're ready to go. Um, and all they need to get is those screws that they put in the ground. And they're ready to put the boardwalk up. It's great.
And the other one, not so great news. I mean, we're we're still in a holding pattern with Milltown Dam Project. Um, I had emailed Gannif Fleming yesterday to try to get, see if they can reach out again and get a status update because. We're putting a little bit of pressure with representatives and senators. They do not seem to be budging right now. Um, we just keep hearing the word eminent, but we're not seeing anything, so. Right now, it's status quo with Milltown Dam.
Can um, can we have Panoni reach out to them? Because maybe there's a contact that Panoni has that the Gannif Fleming doesn't have.
I can, I can try.
At this point, we've got to do something. We owe it to our residents to push a little harder if we can. I'm sorry to put that extra burden on you, but. I mean, I I've reached out a number of times. Diane Heron's been very helpful, but um, there's only so much she can do too.
Well, and it was sort of what I said in the beginning is that they don't really respond.
Yeah.
Sometimes political pressure at the base, so.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, it's it's just, I've said it before and it may not be uh uh something that that anybody that's in these agencies likes to hear, but. Um, or this or there are state representatives and 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 senators. These these agencies are unto themselves and and I don't care how many. Elected officials contact them, etc. They are going to keep to their schedule and their agenda and their own agency. Protocols and rules and it it just seemed impenetrable. See you guys, thank you. I just think they're impenetrable and I I appreciate everything you're doing, but there I've just come to the conclusion they're going to get it out when they get it out and we're just going to have to.
There there is.
Wait.
So I.
I don't, how does that, oh, because you.
I was just wondering if it could get larger.
Yeah. So at any rate, well, whatever you can do.
I don't know if I can, because then I'll mess up the zoom.
What else we got?
Any other matter? Anybody have anything that um?
Wanted to follow up with the payload like costs.
Yes, I actually would like to.
So to date, uh, this commission has spent five million, four hundred eighty two thousand, five hundred ninety three dollars. As of uh, May seventeen.
Do that again, five million, four hundred.
Ninety three.
Five million, four hundred eighty two thousand, five hundred ninety three dollars. Depending upon what these alternate route would be, that would be either an extra one and a half million or. Four point three.
Okay.
And then can you play in the grant uh to counter any of those municipal dollars?
I don't know which grants we would go for depending on which sections and.
Know what grants we've received relative to those dollars spent.
Yes, we have, we see. We've actually applied three million dollars, three million seventy one thousand, seven hundred forty eight dollars. Out of pocket to the township has been two million, four hundred and ten dollars.
That's an that's an important number.
Two million, four hundred.
Ten thousand.
Is direct resident taxpayer dollar.
Yes.
Okay.
Which is forty four percent of the total.
Thank you. All right, um. Do we have to bring up any other? Issues with um. We go. Allocation for anything.
Oh, sure.
That we're, okay, so um, so we go, we go suffer the loss this past week. Uh, one of our officers um. Tragically lost his two year old son. And uh, the townships have agreed, this township has agreed to pay a portion of funeral expenses. So that will come out of the um funds that will be the overage.
Within our we go.
Within our we go budget. So it's not anything that's coming out of township coffers. There's no need to reallocate any monies or anything like that. Um, for this expenditure and it's just um, just to let them know that we're supportive.
We care, yep. Yep, thanks, Michelle, for that.
And uh, is there any public comment, Eric? Is there anybody left on Zoom? Liaison reports, there are none. Correspondence, none. And so we're down to the last item. Cody?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
I'll second that.
Oh, thank you, David. And those in favor. Thank you very much for coming. Thanks, Eric, for staying to the veteran.
Thanks, Michelle.